All right, welcome everybody tonight. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda? Second, all in favor? All right, we are going to eliminate item number two. They're going to come back in the special meeting that we're having, I think on the 24th. They're going to come back and present that workman's comp proposals. So with that being added, everybody in favor? I'm opposed, motion passes. All right, adopt the minutes of the regular meeting of August 14th. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Motion passes. Can I get a motion to accept the consent agenda in its entirety? Any discussion? And just for the record, I've got my two grandkids on here. Set this because of my teachers and so.
Because they're employees children, you got no choice. It's not discretionary ministerial, you have to do it.
That's what you have to do. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, let's put this down to number five. Travel requests, we got two travel requests. We're going to do those both at the same time. Can I get a motion?
Travel, same question, the other, that part concerned.
That's your one.
It'll be only donations.
That's a good catch, I was wanting to make sure you all watch it. All right, five, accept donations. All right, we've got four separate donations to the school. Can I get a motion to accept those donations?
Motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Review policies, following policies are presented for review. I think this is just, I don't think there was any changes or anything to them, so it's just a renewal. So, can I get a motion, go ahead and approve it?
I want to say I'm thankful.
Yes ma'am.
Second.
It wouldn't be the same if you didn't.
I just want to commend Leanne for doing such a great job, putting everything together for us. But it's still a couple that she's going to revise, not the context of it, but just the formatical.
Gotcha.
And the format, so she's going to do that, we talked today, and they should be improving even more.
Okay, I do want to thank you and Leanne for, I hope Leanne's here, Susan Jackson.
She was good.
Thank you for really spending the time at that little level detail. Appreciate it.
She took it on and doing great on me.
All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Establish club for Long Beach High School. Dr. Locke, would you, do you want to comment on?
I was prepared for that question, so I brought Mr. Greer with me tonight to tell me answers. He is going to facilitate this club, he is very excited, it's a student publication, and the students, we met with them at the end of the year last year, talked about things that they wanted to see done on campus, and this was one of the big demands, and he was kind enough to accept this challenge. So would you like to speak, Mr. Greer?
Other than just saying it's a great outlet for students for journalistic writing skills, finding ways to express themselves outside of the English class, it also allows them to create a creative writing publication that will be probably twice yearly, and be approved by Dr. Locke, going through all right handles, but it's just a really fun thing, and I had a student approach me about it, and I said, yeah, let's try and do it.
And I appreciate you taking on that extra responsibility.
So, what's the criteria, what's the criteria to get in the club?
The criteria is to be in good standing, all students at Long Beach High School must be in good standing, they'll fill out an application, and we'll select new staff yearly, pretty much if you want to come and write, and you want to help us out with it, let's do it.
That is great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Discussion, adoption, financial reports. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Any discussion? Amber, you got anything you want to say? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Okay, discussion and recommendations regarding substitute and Kelly services?
Okay, Ward, this is something I need to discuss with you, and coming to you tonight for your help. I met with the principals several days ago, they've all expressed to me that they are in desperate need of some help, and let me tell you what we're asking for. We've in the past had around eighty-five to ninety substitutes on our roll, that's down to forty now, and we're having a very, very difficult time competing with other districts with substitutes. All of our surrounding districts use and outsource, and I think they all use Kelly Services. I know Pass does, Harrison County, and Biloxi, I think Gulfport uses them as well, and we're just having a difficult time being able to compete with that. I've taken two classes already this year where we've had long-term subs at Reeves and at Harper. We've taken those classes and dispersed them among other home rooms because we're having difficulty getting substitutes, and those that we do get, that we want to keep, we're using those in long-term situations. So now we have situations at each school where teachers having cover classes for other teachers, and counselors covering classes, things of that nature, and it's really hitting us hard this year, and I know we've brought this to you in the past, and so what I'm asking is that you will just allow us to do this for remainder of the year and enter into agreement with Kelly. They bill us based on the number of subs that we use, and Amber, you want to address anything along those lines? It's gotten to a point now to where it's just hard for us to cover our classes, and I think the primary reason for that is we're not competitive with the other districts around us because they've outsourced them, and now we kind of box ourselves into a corner. We've got quite a few teachers who are out on a long term, that were using long-term subs for pregnancies and for some other issues, and we just can't put, call in people in those classrooms. So we need your help, and I'm asking that you allow us to try this within our current budget until the end of May, and we'll come back and revisit it over some.
Amber, what kind of budgetary impact is that?
It's going to be a little bit over where we're at, probably fifteen thousand dollars or so depending on usage. Our records will be a lot more accurate because of the way they do their tracking. If we don't do this, we need to consider increasing what we're paying subs, probably ten to fifteen dollars a day, which will have a very similar impact on our budget because we can't continue, it's an issue at this point, not just financially, but academically.
How much do we pay subs now?
Sixty dollars a day.
We do have, each year we're averaging about two thousand sub days per year, so you say two thousand times sixty-five dollars, and you're kind of similar.
Yeah, and their daily rate is what? Ours is sixty now, what?
They pay the daily rate that we pay, they just have a sum to about six hundred and fifty teachers where we have a sub pool of about forty.
Right.
And some of our forty are also Kelly Services subs, therefore they're going to the Kelly Services entity first because they get insurance, they get other benefits that we can't offer subs.
Yeah, so we pay our subs, they're not insured?
Right, and the other thing to look at from an HR standpoint is Kelly recruits, trains, they do all of the pre-employment checks, to our standards, we need to tell them what our standards are, but they do orientations and stuff that we honestly don't have time to do because we're trying so hard to get subs in a classroom.
Right.
They do all the background checks and.
So what about, this is just a question I was thinking about, what about the subs that have been with us that are not part of Kelly, do they have to go and join with Kelly to be a sub in Long Beach?
Would you get a discounted rate on those subs because we've already done all the recruiting and background, so we pay Kelly less to use them, but yes, they would be picked up by Kelly and become part of their staff?
It sounds like they get more benefits.
They get paid weekly, they get, they're eligible for insurance and that type of stuff that we just can't offer them.
So what is our charge a day on that, that we get charged basically?
The up charge is thirty-six percent, I believe, but we're already paying up to twenty-four percent on some of them.
All right, is any of this due to, is our absenteeism of teachers growing, or is it pretty constant? This is just a matter of there's not a big pool to pull from, or is there other underlying issues that the demand's going up?
Our pool has dropped in half, and then it seems like we have a lot of FMLAs to start the year, and we can't control that, it seems like just the timing. So when you already, you're down subs, and then you add in the fact that you've got more out than we usually have at this time of year.
Because once we go this way, it's going to be hard to reverse it because all the substitutes are going to be with Kelly. It's going to be hard for us to go out and get people unless we go through Kelly. Once we make this decision, even though we say we're going through it through May, once you're locked in, those substitutes are going to be with Kelly. So we're going to be, we're going to be locked in from here on.
Those ones that have been loyal to us and have been good to us and have worked consistently with us will still have that option, they can work for Kelly on the days that are not worked here and can still come back onto our payroll just like they are now.
But now when we do the agreement with Kelly, we cannot bring in our own substitute, we have to use them, right?
On certain situations, can't we bring them?
Yeah, you can, well you can have anybody you want come to us, and we would put them on our payroll, but we already have some subs who work in Long Beach and work for us.
But my question was, if we have substitute teachers who want to substitute here at Long Beach but does not want to be employed by Kelly, if we go with Kelly, we can't use them.
Correct.
That's what I thought. So that's what I'm saying, once we lock in, we lock in. So if you feel comfortable with it from a budgetary standpoint, then I'm feel comfortable. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Can I get you with Kelly?
I am, yes sir, thank you.
All in, yeah, all in favor? I didn't know who made the motion, I was going to say. He made the motion.
I thought he made it last night.
Give me a second, we're in discussion.
I just wanted to listen.
What about Monday though, what year, I'm sorry?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Our discussion and recommendations regarding pass company.
All right, Mr. President, this is, I'm going to turn this over to you, Kevin.
Well, and I think everybody's aware of, I'm just going to summarize highly, and then I'm going to let the experts take over. This is basically broke down into three type phases. Phase one is going to be the LED and reconditioning our air conditions and so forth. That is a, once all said and done, on the energy savings that we're going to get from this upgrade, will more than offset the cost. So in my mind, that, I don't have a problem with phase one. Phase two is to go into middle school quarrels in Reeves and replace the windows, which dates back to, someone back to the sixties, doors which probably originally go back to the original schools. And the reason I kind of like this option is with us doing this bond issue for the current new high school, we got to understand that now we're tied into a new high school, we've got to make these other schools last as long as we can, which, and I think if we do the envelope of these other schools, I'm pretty comfortable with saying we can get twenty, twenty-five years out of these other schools, elementary schools and middle school. Understanding that our long-range master plan at one time is going to be consolidate elementary schools out on this new piece of property that we bought north of Harper. But in between now and then, since we've made this bond issue here, that could be fifteen, twenty or so years out forward. So what can we do to assure that we can have two elementary schools and one middle school in Harper McConaughey that will last us until that twenty, twenty-five year timeframe here? And I think with this upgrades to the schools with the windows and the doors, we've got new roofs, the air conditions are all in good shape, and I think this will, the risk of having major issues for the next fifteen, twenty, maybe twenty-five years will probably be minimal. A lot of those schools, they're not your metal type schools, they're cinder block schools, they got good roof, they got metal roofs, so I really think the structure itself will be fine when we, if we redo the envelope part of the building. So the next phase three, phase three really ties back to this assessment, this security assessment, okay? What we asked them to do was, hey, go through our security assessment and see what you can do for us to try to minimize the risks that are tied to security issues, and they did. The phase three would come back and do a lot of the recommended assessments that this security group did for us. It will put the, I think it's the electronic doors, it will put locks on each one of the individual rooms so that if we do have an emergency, that can be locked down. They also set the blinds to close down the outside looking in to protect where kids are from the inside. So, I like the idea of going, if we're going to do this and we're going to be able to fund it, if we don't fund it through some type of mechanism, we're not going to be able to do another bond issue. So this would be a mechanism for funding those security issues going forward. So now, what I'll do is I'll let y'all, if y'all want to explain a little further about the three different options and maybe the savings that we'll get on each option, and how the savings from the first option will help pay for the second, third.
Right, so if y'all, and I'll try not to be repetitive with much what you said, but if you have this proposal in front of me, you know, to give it, I'll follow along and I'll kind of hit the hot points. If you look at page two, this is just obviously the letter, kind of taking a summary. First of all, I want to say thanks for having us back here, and this has been a good process. We just finished up the investment grant audit, obviously, real clear, now we go to the street hall, we're back in front of you tonight. Wanted to congratulate you on your bond issue, I have not been back since that happened, I guess that was a huge win for the district. Congratulations on that. Wanted to thank Amber and Donna Crawford and Jay and Leah Ramsey, whenever Jake was gone a little bit, through this process, and there's a lot of timing still on the ground, and then your, the people that work for your district will do a great job, and they've done really well. So if you look in this letter, the main thing I want to point out here is obviously some other positives, but this program will produce an excess of four million dollars in energy and operational savings over a twenty-year life of the equipment. And that's what we're referring to lights that have a thousand hour of light life, and so you can reasonably expect a twenty-year life span out of these lights, and so it's a huge, huge save for the district, what it'll have in the form of a future in a couple of pages over. You know, you're obviously going to reduce capital expense from your fund balance and your reduced operating costs. There is obviously some positive public perception of this, there are savings for the district, it's energy efficient, you know, you're adding, fixing some aesthetic issues at some of the schools, the high school obviously is new, it's not part of this, but then you have a brand new high school over the course of the next several years, and this will allow you to do some things aesthetically at the other schools that will really be helpful, and hopefully avoid some particular issues you could have just from, you know, parents and teachers that work at the other schools, not the high school, the environment they work in, any of those schools. You look at page four, this is kind of, just want to catch up on where we are, you know, about a year ago, roughly a little less than that, we came before you guys and got some information, showed you just a feasibility report, this is what we think we can accomplish, then we felt like, on eighty-five thousand dollar difference savings, and what we found, what you're seeing in this report, is actually almost double that, which is, which is great news, you know, our goal is, has always been, I think we've talked about this before, as a company, we want to under promise and under deliver. You know, we're about, want to be transparent, and we want to make sure that whatever we tell you is going to be real to them today. So we did a feasibility study, it's done, investment grant audit, that's what we finished recently. It's a long, if you recall, in March, you approved this, did the investment grant audit, and so since March, we've been in the school year, we do light sensors and occupancy sensors, and the summer, we've done all this auditing, lighting, HVAC, and others, and we'll talk a little more about that in a second, and then we did modeling, obviously, which builds the guarantee, or what hopefully we like to guarantee for the district. So it's a pretty extensive deal, it's reins and reins of bonders, we don't have any of this tonight, but he would like to agree with that, obviously we have to give that to you, but that's what builds the project. Final proposal, which is where we are tonight, so we're going to walk a little bit further, three different options, A, B, and C, and or C. And then the action that would, you know, apart from the board is authorization to move forward. If you look at page five, this is just a real quick recap about performance contracting, you know, if you look to the pile on the left, you've got a hundred dollar pile, you know, that's what you're spending right now on operations and energy, but from the right, performance contracting is, is taking your savings and moving into debt service, upgrading your district going forward. The great thing about what we found here is that, and you'll see in a later page, is that it's not just a hundred percent moving it over to debt service, but in the lighting project alone, it's immediate dollars back to the cash balance. So it's a really successful energy upgrade. Think of it as you are, in this scenario, you are refinancing your utility bill, which is a concept no one's used to, but that's exactly what you're doing ultimately. Page six, this is a chart, if you look at, and I won't go deep in details on this unless you want to, this is everything that we looked at, that, you know, when we did the audit, we took on a lot of different issues to ultimately be, to be able to come back and say, is this viable or not viable? Some of them were deemed to be, some of them were deemed not to be. Plus, the green, the green ones are the ones we'll tackle, and I'll talk about that a little more on the next, next page, or a couple pages from now.
And for some of y'all that can't see the report, some of these items that they're evaluating, what we did was, we evaluated the return on the investment, and some of these, we realized there, it wasn't worth the return of the investment, and so we elected not to put those into this proposal. So the ones that we went forward with had positive returns in a short period of time.
Right, absolutely. So on the next page, page seven, this is the base option project, this is the one, this is LED lighting, this is envelope, this is HVAC controls and retrocommissioning, you know, a very reasonable project, generates a hundred forty-nine thousand dollars in savings. Again, remember, we told you to be able to get eighty-five thousand, it's a hundred forty-nine dollars, just shot one fifty. Your annual utility bill, just for reference point, is five hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars a year. The hundred forty-nine thousand dollar in savings does not include the high school, and so as you build this high school out over the next several years, you're going to achieve savings with the efficiency of the high school, which is not calculated in this, and so there is a, just in your mind, there's a bonus for y'all as the, you know, operational costs and the utility costs come online as you complete the new high school.
This portion, he's finishing up with phase one.
Right.
This is a, with a return of savings of a hundred and forty-nine something thousand a year, this has a return, it will pay for itself in what, four, five, six years?
Is that the total, is it total nine, is that what you're saying?
It's nine, it's nine years, if you go to the base, there's other things we added
to it, but if you go to the base, the base deal is nine years pay off of, you're financing over fifteen.
Right.
But it's a nine-year payback if you're just paying for it in cash.
That's fair.
If you look, and just to go a little deeper in this, you look at page eight, I'm not going to go to every school because it's replicated in obviously the other areas, but if you look at the middle school, I'm just going to explain to you real quick what those things are. Middle school interior, first of all, interior, LED lighting upgrade, new Eaton fixtures. Eaton is a well-known reputable brand, okay? There are some companies that do what we do, that go in, they buy cheap products from China, companies that may not, may or may not exist in a few years, but it's just not the way that we're going to approach business. We want to put in the product, the best product we can put in at a reasonable cost, we have a relationship with Eaton as a vendor, and we're able to get really good pricing, and so this, aesthetically, it's a much better option, and it's a brand that twenty years from now, Eaton's going to be around, they're not going away. Experian LED lighting upgrade, obviously that's just Experian LED lighting throughout the school. Building envelope, weatherization, this is just, this is not a huge budget item, but it makes a difference, it's going through and looking at all the doors and the windows, and making sure they're still, making sure that there's caulking where there needs to be caulking, there's weather stripping where there needs to be weather stripping, just basic stuff that, you know, your main skies do a good job of, they have, but they just, this is one, it's hard to tackle in a school district inside of which you have. Programmable smart T-Sats, retrocommissioning, this is where we go in, and just make sure your ACs aren't running at sixty-eight degrees in the middle of the night, you know, and you have controls in some places, you don't have them in others, and so we'll go through the process of applying those, maybe you apply and fixing them or maybe you fix. Demand control of outside air in gym and cafeteria, by code, you have to have outside air, which you're running it all the time, you don't need to run it all the time when people aren't there, so just putting controls to keep that from running when you don't necessarily need it. Plug load controls is something that takes care of printers and copiers, it's a, it's a technology placed into your outlet, your plug preventing machine, your printers, your copies in there, and they cut off in the hours of the night when you don't need them. Vampire loads is something that you may hear, it just, it adds up, it's ended up being reliable today. So that's, obviously it's similar throughout the district, throughout the schools and the central office, I won't withdraw all of them, but that's just want to kind of recap what we ultimately decided there was a good return on, in the base option. All right, expanded scopes, this is the two things that Mr. Pierce talked about a minute ago. You have, the first expanded option, which we'll call B, is the quarrels in elementary and Reeves Elementary, windows and doors. And so when we first came down here last year, one of the things we heard from the very get-go was windows. You have old windows, you have plywood in some places, you have plexiglass in some places, they've been around a long time. The reality is they're not up to code, no one's going to come in and make you change them, but they are. Where you live, your, any new building where they require hurricane, they call it Miami Day specs for your windows, that's what they call it, and you don't have them. I mean, you literally have plywood and plexiglass, and so there's that issue there, that's one thing. The other issue is just the fact that, to Mr. Pierce's point earlier, you have these buildings that exist, they have good bones, they don't have a good envelope in the sense of the, of the windows and the doors. If you're able to fix that issue, you already got the roofs fixed, you got the HVAC for the most part taken care of these schools, you are going to secure this building for a much longer period of time than you otherwise would. You will have problems with your windows and doors as long as you have this building, unless you do something about it. You know, this is a good opportunity to dive into it. There's something else we thought about through the process, and I mentioned it earlier, you have the high school getting redone, you know, the reality is, everything you deal with, you got the politics of kids, the parenting kids at elementary school, and the middle school, and the high school, you know, you get to build a brand new high school, what are you doing on the other schools? You know, and this is an opportunity potentially to be able to go and tackle some of this stuff, aesthetically help the two elementary schools, and also security envelope, and just extend the life of the buildings, which is, I think, a positive. We did, we also looked at the middle school, the middle school has, as you guys know, on the front, a lot of storefronts are already been replaced, it could use some windows in the back, the reality is, is that the middle school had, was literally by itself was the cost of the other elementary schools combined. And so ultimately, from a cost standpoint, it's just saying, where do you want to drive back where you can actually accomplish a whole envelope as opposed to a partial envelope?
Let me ask a question.
Yes ma'am, either.
Okay, on this base option, you have all the lighting, the windows.
Yes ma'am.
But you don't have the heating and air HVAC.
They're in there, yes ma'am. I'm going to get, they're, this is, I'm just going to.
She's going to say.
Under the base.
Yeah, the base, you don't need the HVAC.
Why not?
Because you already have it.
But, but how, how old are they, you didn't tell us.
You do, we have the inventory, I mean, like I said, that goes back to the reins of bond, we inventory every, you don't have this in front of you, Ms. Cook, but we inventory every HVAC system throughout the district. When was the last time they reported, the ones that the elementary school replaced with the high school? There must have been a bond issue, because they're all similar vintages, so.
It wouldn't be worth replacing those now, because we still got a lot of life expectancy up.
Amber just said twenty-ten was when you did the bond issue.
I think I remember, it's like some kind of lease agreement or something.
It was like, that, that free bill note that pays off in twenty-twenty-nine is part of, that's part of it.
I'm going to A and P funding.
But I remember something when we did the heat program, we had an issue with one of the units at the heat, at the middle school.
You have an issue at Harper McConaughey.
Yeah, and that's going to be, go ahead.
You want, I'm, you want. Well, actually, we had that included, I think we've decided that it's actually more advantageous to the district. I gave the quote that I have directly to Amber, and she's going to contract directly with Trane to get it fixed, we're just going to facilitate it, and it's not a large expense, it's not something. And it's not, and it's not HVAC, it's, it is, it's the fresh air unit that puts fresh air into Harper McConaughey. And so you have, you have air and heat already, it's just an issue when it was built originally and never properly worked, and so you're not getting fresh air, fresh air into it. But for the most part, your HVAC is in good shape throughout the district, in pretty, pretty good shape. Much better than I typically see, I'll be frank with you there, so usually there is a large HVAC component of the base.
And then, that fresh air.
And it's not, and it's not HVAC, it's, it is, it's the fresh air unit that puts fresh air into Hartman Company. And so you have, you have, you have air and heat already. It's just an issue when it was built originally and never properly worked, and so you're not getting fresh air, fresh air into it. But for the most part, your HVAC is in great throughout the district, in pretty, pretty good shape.
Much better than I typically see. I'll be frank with you there. So usually there is a large HVAC component of the base.
And then that fresh air mechanism, system is very crucial to that school. The mold and mildew and the fresh air coming in and out of it.
But, but the thing I'm saying, okay, like the middle school gym, we just replaced an AC compressor.
You're not, you're never going to run away from HVAC problems.
That's right, well, those are your biggest use of heat, of heating and air, of your HVAC.
They are significant. So what we're doing with, what we are attacking with the base project is controls and turning them off when people aren't there. So there's technology, you can either improve the efficiency of the equipment itself, or you can just turn it off. Nothing more efficient than being off. So we could, we could un-air condition all your schools, that is an option, but it's viable.
But if we did un-air condition, we'd get something energy efficient, heating and air unit.
The, the challenge is, most HVAC paybacks are much longer than you're willing to stomach. They're probably thirty, forty years in terms of efficiency. The best thing for your budget is the, is the controls.
Make sure they're running when they need to run and not running when they don't need to. But your inventory is pretty, pretty good shape. Lots of few things. So still page nine, we talked about the vulnerability improvements. We took the binders, we showed them a minute ago. The big issues that you have throughout the district, and again, the high school's going to be addressed through the new construction project. But you have four mounted, second, this is a recommendation from the report that you received. Four mounted secondary security locks, pull-down privacy shades on interior doors, exterior privacy window tent, and then the big item was the install electronic card access system on all interior doors. Just making sure you know who comes in and comes out, and all the people that come in and the people that push you in.
Every teacher and student would have a card, and that's how they get in and out of the building.
This covers the majority of the issues that were outlined in that report. And I'll tell you, on this, we got the binder a little over a week ago. And so we quickly went to work to try and figure out what was the cost to it, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. And this is, I think it's, obviously it's a pressure point for you guys as a district, and it's something that, you know, this provides an opportunity to tackle, and otherwise you may not have an opportunity to tackle from the finances. All right, so page ten, there's no questions on that. Three items, so number one, A, so that's the project A, this is currently finished. Five hundred thirty-three thousand dollars per year in electrical and gas bills. The base project saves a hundred forty-nine thousand dollars a year. Obviously, you take debt service out of that, I'll show you the spreadsheet in a minute, but you immediately generate additional forty-one thousand dollars a year back to, back to the district. Just a solid energy efficiency project. Option two, or the second item, building and structure of Corals and Reeves, securing that envelope, taking care of some aesthetics. We went through the process, we hired our guys, their folks on our windows on the ground four times, walked every building, inventoried your windows. You got some interesting, like, drop ceiling, different nature that, so our goal at the end of the day is, is everything we do is a no chain order job. So the prices we give you are the prices they will give you. We can't come back with you. You'll remember how we talked about it, bill of processes, you hire an engineer, they do all the report, you hire a contractor, and you get hit with a chain order. Not our, not our process. And so this is a quote that we stand by, the new windows and doors and corals. We talked about, you know, new research, HVAC, which we already have there, so this is really the security envelope. The third item, you get eighty-four, eighty-first security forces squad can come in. I was actually here tonight to do the presentation, putting together that package and just talk about that. We've put up a amount, an amount not to exceed one point three five million to make the improvements needed to secure the facility. That is up, and up to a mount, we've got to drill down on those numbers. Like I said, we have a vulnerability report through a little over a week, and so we got to put some numbers to it. Well, but that's going to be the electronic system, card access system, kind of hardwired and then making sure this system is installed to where you got to put over the improvements in your system. And then this is the fourth point, because just reiterating the law that exists to be able for y'all to do this. If you look at utility analysis of page eleven, I'm not going to go deep into this. And again, this is where, we use all of this, this is, this is the audit, this is the deep dive. We go the construction project off of, and we'll go our guarantee off of. This is just an overview, so you can see what the district consumes, what you're using. You know, if you have more questions, obviously feel free to ask, I will read you the, but you could be the areas if y'all want. You can have all the binders, and you can just read until you get thorough. Let's go to cash flows. So page thirteen, this is the base scope. This is the LED lighting, this is the envelope, taking care of those issues. If you look down at the program summary, you've got a left, left corner chart, the blue line, first year budget impact is positive forty-one thousand three hundred ninety-four dollars to the district. Lifetime budget impact, the actual cost of total program with debt service and everything is just over two million. Cut out of the bottom left, take that. Since that, if you look at the next one, please, if you have questions, please start it. Page fourteen is the base project plus the envelope improvement, Corals and Reeves. You have the same, look at the same line. First year in this scenario is going to be a negative budget impact if you decided to do the windows and doors at Corals and Reeves. Eighty-four, eighty-eight thousand four hundred fifty-four dollars. Lifetime impact of three hundred eighty-one thousand dollars. I think the important thing to note here, though, is you're spending three hundred eighty-one thousand dollars for a project that costs one point eight five, yeah, one point eight five million. So you are leveraging, you're refinancing your utility bill and leveraging it to accomplish changing out, fixing the envelope, Corals and Reeves, for less than four hundred thousand dollars, a project that actually costs one point eight. That make sense? Third one. And then the next one is the base scope plus the envelope improvement, Corals and Reeves, plus the vulnerability improvements. First year budget impact's a hundred eighty-four thousand dollars a year, lifetime impact is two point one. Again, now you're taking a one point eight plus a one point three million dollar job, and you're, you're still getting it for pennies on the dollar. You're using this as a financing mechanism to be able to tackle. The conversation that we've had too is this, so in this scenario, you can do, the lighting project, let's, let's put it to the side. You tackled the lighting project because it's a positive cash flow, and it makes sense. But windows and security measures, and the question that, if I'm y'all, and only y'all can answer it, is if you were to go out there and fund it on your own, without any other mechanism to do it, how are you, how do you come up with the financing? How do you, how are you able to go get the dollars? You can do the bond issue, which I don't think you're going to do again for two thousand and twenty-nine.
The free bill note will roll off in twenty-twenty-nine, and that's our next available ability. A bond issue, we're going to be twenty years, twenty-plus years.
Right.
Before we can go for a public election again.
And so you're, you know, up against a rock, and our place, obviously it's a pressure point, the security is. Making sure those elementary schools last for much longer is a huge issue. And the question for y'all, more than anything else, is can you absorb, is there a way in your budget to be able to absorb the extra, the extra hit? But again, you're not going to have, you're not going to find a better opportunity than leveraging your utility savings to accomplish this. One other point I meant to, I'll point out now, I didn't point out earlier, is on page sixteen, you actually, Jay asked this. We did a rendering, pro basic rendering of one of the elementary schools, from what you currently have to what you would, what the aesthetic would look like when you convert the windows, the windows and doors to Corals and Reeves. And it, you know, obviously it'd be much more attractive, A plus, you know, security help. So that is, you know, pretty quick. Feel free to ask questions, we want to, if there's anything to add.
What are you saying, what cost would be always?
There's the three, there's, there's three different options. So the first is, if you go to page thirteen. Public cost of project is two million, eight thousand, eighty-five dollars. The capital cost. I'm sorry, yeah, I'm sorry. The capital cost is one million four hundred and fourteen.
Top left.
Yeah, top left, very top, A, A in the top left chart.
Then you might want to, so.
So capital cost, one point four million dollars, the debt service payment on it. We actually secured a couple of options, that's going to be your next step, is figure out the financing. But we estimated a hundred thousand dollars for the debt service.
Is it just based on a typical lease purchase with a bank or something like that?
We've actually gone to Bank of America and got, actually, we've locked the rates with them, but we're going to explore their options that might even further drive down that, that cost of. We're not FAs, so we can't, I can't speak to financing other than show it to you in cash flow, but you need to have real numbers in front of you, so. We, you know, we estimate that first year debt service of a hundred thousand dollars. And that's column E in, over on the right hand side. And then column T is your savings. So that's how we're getting to the net budget impact. Does that make sense? You're saving a hundred fifty, you're only spending a hundred at debt service. And then it rolls, if you go through, you know, the next two pages. For base scope, the lighting plus the windows and doors, Corals and Reeves, it's a three point two eight six million dollar project. And then if you do, the all of them, all three options, it is a four point six three six million dollar project.
My question, Amber, would be budgetarily, what, I mean, from a budget standpoint, what can we afford to do?
Well, right now, we're, I kind of have the, I'm thinking of the word used. We've got some M A P debt falling off, they paid off. So this will be the first year that, that we don't have to set aside off the top of our M A P allocation to pay for that debt. So we could go right into paying another loan with that money, money that we're not accustomed to having in our operational budget.
So no, I'm up in seats, I'm saying.
And on these card readers, you know, and I'm probably delving too much into that. Is that, are there a lot of different ways to do that? I mean, have, I know you've been going ahead for weeks, I mean, we look at, you know, like, what the most efficient.
That's why we did it to a not to exceed amount, so we worked with you and your staff to figure out what makes sense for you as a district. What I've seen normally is, every kid has a, has a necklace with a, with a picture on it that has the ability to open up locks. So instead of having to have your main staff go around and lock this door, unlock that door, they're all locked, unless you have the card access. You know, if you have a visitor, there's visitor protection as well. So that's the typical model we see. But with the way it's structured, we could explore those different options for you, so.
That was probably, before we did that, I mean, not that I, because I'm certainly not an expert, I probably want to talk to the experts a little bit more, because a lot of times, it's the shooter in these cases is the student, so, you know, you give it access. Or it seems like with a bunch of kids, having that, it would be really easy to steal one of those and access to a school.
You can turn them down, you can turn them off, and you can limit when they're exposing. And then the other thing you can do is the, the response departments can lock things down. The big thing you want to do is lock people down in place, and you want to keep movement to a minimum. So that's why they have the shades inside, so that everybody, and you got secondary locks, so everybody goes back into classrooms.
All that makes sense to me, it's just I'm thinking about, you know, how many students do we have, and each one of them has a card to access.
But they're not permanently locked on. Like, if somebody walked away with one, it's essential brain allows it to check in real time if that's allowed to student, things like that, but.
Also, since Sam brought that up, you could have had them from kids, and then it's going to be even more, I think, more trouble, because the teachers are going to have to keep up with it, and we're talking about elementary kids.
Sure.
But my main focus is the monetary side of it. If we got money available, we got a new school that we're trying to get built. Now, that's my focus right now. Not that I don't care about the other schools, but I care about all the schools. But we've got to look at what might come up with this new school that we have. And that's, that right now, I think that should be our focus, it's just like jumping into something, because I'm taking care of one other thing.
Like this proposal.
Yes, ma'am.
Like, like Deborah says, we're trying to watch what we do. So how good is this? Like, in two years, when we make sure we start construction of the high school and stuff, we make sure we don't have any.
How long is the pricing good for?
Right.
If, that wouldn't be, like, if we're the means of side, you can't guarantee prices for two years.
Interest rates and all that.
So I would say.
We would have to commit to.
You'd have to commit to a strategy or not, we'll work with you either way.
But, but it sounded to me, though, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, Amber, that, that, I mean, there's savings on all of this. I mean, like, Plan A is a no-brainer to me. I'd really like to see us do Plan B, and I really, I mean, I would really like to see us build the implement the safety things, because it's very important as well. I mean, we asked for these studies, they've given us these studies, and if we've got a way to do it that doesn't impact the high school money, you know, I'd hate to turn that down, and there'd be some safety issue that we didn't address. So I mean, I guess my, my big question just is the money there, from, I mean, I feel like the money's there to cover, like, that third option as well, not touching any of the money that we put aside with the high school?
Well, some of these contracts, and I'm just getting into it, I've been studying and going through all this, but, and I know you guys, I won't be expert than I am, but a lot of these contracts are implemented in phases where you might contract, and, and, and the law requires it's got to be, it's got to be separate, the scope of work's got to be in it for each phase, so that you can amend the contract. Point is, if, if you go forward, you can draw a contract where you, 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 you might say, we're going to do phase one, but we'll make an election on phase two, or you're going to do phase two, but we're making an election on three.
That's, that's a great, you know, we actually were even talking about, the way it's currently structured is one phase, but it's not hard to amend it to be three different phases with three different notice receipts. And so you can, you'll have a lot more traction on how your high school's doing. We wouldn't necessarily need to make a decision, so the lights and the air conditioning, the saving stuff, we want to tackle immediately. We'll start getting our savings today. Quite frankly, we're not going to tackle the other stuff till next summer. But that isn't call up a contractor and say, hey, I want you to start next week situation. So we'd probably look at a February to March kind of notice to proceed timeframe, so that'll give you plenty of time to get a little further in the process.
Okay, so we would, yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
But we don't want to, we don't want to have to go back out and start the process over.
The, the structure, to your original point, you'd be in a contract for all three phases with a notice to proceed per phase, if you need that comfort level to say, you know what, this high school cost us twice what we thought it was going to, we can't afford it anymore, we're going to cancel that phase. So that is, is firewall to each phase. And we could easily work with your lawyer to amend the contract. You actually did review it correctly, and get the one to say.
I, I went through it, I read all the stuff, I learned what section one seventy-nine, I did all that, but it's just, it's thick stuff, you know, you guys.
But you're right, you nailed it, that's exactly right. It is, it's a process.
When we put this contract together, we want to make sure that incorporates three phases in the opt-out clauses if the funding is not available in phase two or for phase three.
It's modular enough, it would not be hard to.
It, it, with this agreement, I know there's, there's fourteen B one and there's fourteen B other. Would this be a guaranteed contract that would require M D A approval?
So, no, the answer, the answer is not, the law has changed. So M D A will not go, they don't audit, and they don't, they don't go back behind the audit anymore. That is non-existent law. And so what they would, what they would do, M D A can be a mechanism to be able to go get chief financing, but there's obviously multiple avenues to be able to accomplish that. It is a guaranteed project, so if you read in the contract, we, there will be a guarantee for the savings. Is there one in pipe C?
But I mean, under, what M D A publishes now, they audit those guarantees.
Yeah, they will, yes.
Yes, they, they be on review or yearly reports.
But we actually require, they actually report to them the energy savings, they're trying to aggregate that. They used, they used to have to approve it before you could go to project. That part is different, they only, they only look at it after.
But to answer your original question, in the cash flow, there's a seventy-five hundred dollar a year fee, that is the D M T fee, where we do the, we do the measurement and verification related to the savings, and you do yearly settlement. So if we're not achieving savings, you get a shortfall check that allows you to have confidence to get the debt service.
When do we need to make you all know this, make a, make a decision on that?
I mean, every, every month you delay is costing you fifteen thousand dollars a month, so my recommendation would be on the, on the first say, as soon as possible. I would say, you know, contracts take a little time to get together, financing, we can't start working until financing's in place, so.
It's cost of fifteen thousand a month, why not?
As long as you don't do the upgrade to LED lighting and fix the envelope, you're, you're spending fifty thousand more than you would if you did the upgrade, or the utility costs.
And those savings are guaranteed.
Yes.
That's the part of option A is guaranteed, they have to live up to those numbers.
That's correct.
So if you look at just project A on, on page thirteen, the, the cost of that project is one point four million. The lifetime budget impact is a positive two million. Okay, so after you, after you retire that loan, you will have an additional two million dollars to spend.
Well, I, I still think we need to think of, I mean, look at it, I know y'all saying the units are good, the heat and air conditioning units are good, but let me go look at it. Not that I'm an expert, but if you're having to pay two thousand dollars on an AC compressor, something ain't right there.
But I will say, I've been doing this for fifteen years, and, and usually air conditioning is something that you use, like doors and windows. It's not something that ever pays for itself, and.
And I appreciate what you're, I mean, I worked for train air conditioning for 15 years. And so, like, I would love to say that air conditioning is the greatest thing ever, but it's just, they're really expensive capital projects, that's the reason you did bond issue originally. Like, that was not an energy savings project when you put the air conditioner in eight years ago. So, you know, you have newer units than, than most schools that I've seen. I'll defer to you guys on timings, I would just, I would discourage hope on air conditioning being something you want to add.
But I know, but the big, that's the biggest user, I know that is.
Lights, lights are, are up there, and the technology has changed where the payback is, is better.
Right, I understand that's going to help, but I think we need to discuss it and-
I have one more question, I'm referring to the lights, or like, even just as, with the base coat, this project of, when could you start theoretically, I mean, can you do that when the school's in?
As soon as funding is in place, we do what's called split shift, and so typically start after school. We'll work with individual principals to figure out where it makes sense, but they'll work till midnight or 1:00 in the morning, and then put everything back. And so it's not intrusive work.
Start immediately.
As soon as funding is in place. And then the same thing with the controls. Go back to air, I agree that air conditioning is a large user.
Right.
If we can turn it off, that's the strategy, like, because a thermostat costs $200. You can't, whereas new air conditioner costs $20,000. And so, and even in some of your schools, when they did the construction, they put the stat in the cheapest place, they put it right next to the unit, and so they shortcycle. We have a lot of data that shows that that's a common problem, so we're going to put it on the other side of the roof so that they work covered. And so those are the kind of things that we're going to tackle immediately, as soon as funding is in place. Or first step is pass, ask which agreement you want, which project you want to do, then you go get the funding, so there'll be a separate banker here next month. If you were to pass it this month, you would say, hey, we're going to do the project. We finish the contracts, then the financing happens the next four months, and you say, okay, now we're going to go borrow this much money to pay for this project. We can't actually start until the funding is in place.
Deborah Smith, do you have a recommendation, or Tim, I know y'all have been working closely with them, I mean, what is, what is the recommendation?
My recommendation is if you proceed, I certainly think that the option that I would prefer would be the one that included the doors and windows at the elementary schools. I think that's evident in our security assessment, and I think that would certainly address that issue. And short of doing some type of financing that we're talking about, I don't know anywhere to get that done. So that would be my preference.
Your second, the second option?
You, you talking about?
No.
Option two or option three?
You're talking about all the security measures as well?
Yes.
Yeah, so you're talking about A, B, and C.
The third one.
It's the third option.
Right, A, B, and C, so C.
I mean, I agree, I'd like to see, I just want to make sure, I like the idea of having a firewall set up that if, this is kind of, I won't say scary, but this is kind of uncharted territory with this bond issue, and we don't want to mess this up. We want to make sure we can deliver what we promised, plus some, you know?
Everyone has made the exact same point, and I think you would be making the same mistake you did here. And in that scenario, we probably did part of the contract, we'd say, notice to proceed no later than, I'll, I'll work backwards to the date, if it's February 1st or March 1st, so that we can do the work over the summer. Because you've got to order the materials and get it ready, and that'll give you a little more time to know what you're doing, see what's going on.
Any discussion yet?
I still think, I think we need to go, I mean, things need to be handled. I, I, I just, we're talking about the song, that's just like, somebody that's making, I just think it's, that we need to believe.
I really think if air conditions was an issue, they wouldn't address it, because it would be to their benefit to address it. If they're being honest and they're saying that overall, your air condition's fine, then I feel comfortable with, with him stating it, because they're not making any money on that anyway. So if he's telling me that all my air conditions are in good shape, and he would not put money towards those air conditions, being the condition they're on or in today, I feel comfortable with his expert advice, because he could have very easily put that in another phase. But he would have had to justify putting it in there, and he doesn't have the data to justify doing. So I feel good with that, and with the lights and the controls, regardless if you've got a bad air conditioner or not, those are going to be savings. That's, that is a savings because of an inefficient system that we have today. So those are, those are pretty much guaranteed, so.
They are guaranteed.
They are guaranteed. So Option A, I don't have a problem with. That's, to me, if I'm going to invest 1.4 million, and at the end of the day, I'm making, I'm paying that off, and I'm having $2 million extra to spend on other improvements, I'm okay with that. And, and the reason I am is because, you know, we, for years, since I've been on the board since 2005, I've always complained about thermostats being turned down, lights being turned off, so forth and so on, and we've always thought, oh, we're going to do it, never been done. In this case, we can get it done with a guaranteed savings, it will be done, it'll be behind us, we will continue to start having savings from here on out. I'm good with that. Now, when we go to Option B, the doors and the windows, you're not going to get a quick, this is not like Option One. Option B is, is more towards, we're not going after savings as much as we're going after longevity of those structures. Okay, so regardless if they do it or somebody else does it, it needs to be done. Okay, those kind of things, and, and if you've gone through the walkthroughs, which I know you have, every one of those windows are single pane, very inefficient, a lot of them have been replaced with plexiglass, a lot of them have plywood on them. So if we are thinking about staying in those schools for the next 20 years, that's something that we need to do. Now, keeping that in mind, if, with what we're saying about doing Option One and Option B, the total cost of those, of Option One and Option Two, I think is 3.2 million in total cost, and we're getting all that work for only 387, $81,000. So we're getting 3 point, my glass, 3.2 million dollars worth of work to be done, and it's only costing us, out of our operating budget, 381,000. So to me, that's, there again, you're accomplishing two major things that you want to accomplish.
That's true, whether it's over lifetime, that's not-
Yeah. Yeah, it's over the lifetime. Yeah, that's over the lifetime, with the 20 years, you're only paying 381,000. So to me, we, we probably, if we don't do it this way, we probably wouldn't be able to do it, because we couldn't come up with that kind of funding to do that project. But with this, in combination with the savings that we're getting from Option One, it allows us to be able to do this and not have an impact through our, our operating budget. Because this is all operating budget, this is not debt service, this is, it's going to come out of our operating budget. So we want to minimize the impact of that operating budget. And A and B are minimal impacts. Now, we go into C. C is the kind of thing that, you know, is it something we absolutely need to do? And personally, I feel we do, just in today's times. But what I would like to do with Option C is to take it back to this group that did this assessment, and let them look at it and say, hey, are you, do you agree that these are the most bang for our buck to make these schools safe? And they may come back and say, no, you don't need card readers or whatever, and then we'll adjust. Or if you just need card readers on only the doors that are going to be allowed ingress and ingress during those times, then maybe we do it that way.
Well, I just think we need to talk about it before we vote on it tonight.
Well, so what we're voting on tonight is, one of them is Option A, which is everybody, let's first off, let's see, is everybody in favor of Option A?
I'm not in favor of any of it, because it's, because it's a cost right now.
But there is no cost in Option A. All that's, we make money from day one on Option A. That is no cost out of our, of our operating budget, period. In over 20 years, we'll make $2 million. So there is no cost in Option A.
But why are we even asking Amber about how much money we have, it's no cost.
For three.
For Options Two and Three. Options Two and Three is where you got to think, do you want to spend 281,000 over 20 years of the operating budget to cover Option Two? And then if you go to Option Three, do you want to spend the, I think it's one, 2.1 million dollars to have your energy efficiencies, your upgrade to your middle schools, and you're going to be able to conquer safety for all of our schools?
But then we still might have to take the time to look at this.
I've looked at it very in-depth.
But I haven't, and the rest of you all might have.
Yeah, it was a four year. What, this, this, what, you said?
Yeah. So, and the thing I like about these options is, Option A, no brainer, we do it. After we finish A, when we go into Option B, if our high school's coming in with what we think is coming in, and we go with Option B. If it's not, then we cancel B and C. However, that does not solve our security issues at those schools. We're going to have to do that at those schools. We're going to have to do something to secure those schools. We've got to do it. Either we can use this mechanism to fund it, or we can fund it another way. But if you fund it another way, you may not have opportunity to fund it another way, because there's no mechanism to do it. Because we can't do any more bond issues. Our bond issues don't expire till 2029, I think so. This is, this is a chance-
The 3 mil net. Yes, the 3 mil net, that bond issue, put into again for 20 years.
Yeah, that's 20 years. So this is a chance to, to do these kind of things under this type project, that if they weren't here tonight, we wouldn't have this opportunity to do it. So if we go with this, with the stipulations that A's have given, B is an option that we'll have to, once we get the bids and all in on the new high school, and however they're coming in, we feel comfortable, then we go with Option B. And you can't do Option C unless you do B. So security's high on your list, you have to do B before you can do C. So you've got to rank how you feel on the security at these other schools. Are they exposed? Yes, they are, it says it right here. Are we doing the right thing in those schools? I think we need to take this, give it back to them and say, hey, this is what we're going to do to try to solve these problems. Do you think it's, it's what we should be doing, or is there other things? And we may rotate some of these things out and put other things in. But that's something you're not deciding tonight. Tonight, you're deciding on, really, Option A, and we'll cover Option B and C. You're not locked into B and C. If the funding's not there-
Jim said you can add that in the contract language, right?
Is that correct?
That's right. Yeah, I mean, you, you, let's don't spend the money to draft the contract and get all this stuff ready on just Option A. Let's, let's put all three up in there, but have the opt-out clauses where if you don't want to spend the money on B and C, you don't do it. But, but you don't want to go back and have to reinvent the wheel if you decide you want to do it, in my, in my opinion.
It'd be hard to do, it's chain orders, it's messy.
Well, I think you, you have some of these energy opinions talking about what's not any original scope.
That's right.
It just gets complicated.
On the first page there, there's actually a spot where I think it even says we'll do this in one phase, so we'll just change it to do it in three phases, first phase being X, second phase being Y, and third phase being C, so.
So what we'll have to do, if everybody's in favor, we would have to, you would have to work with our attorney to assure that the contract has the language appropriate in it that stipulates those opt-out, opt-out options if funding's not available for Phase Two and Three. And I think that even falls back in on finance, if when we go after these finances, if it would be kind of like a home equity loan that, you know, you take so much out and you only get charged for what you, what you draw, withdraw. And that would give us option after option one to back out, then we'll never borrow that extra money, so we won't have to pay back. So that is, is, you understand what I'm saying there, Jim? That if you can work with them, that would be my motion to put on the table tonight.
For us to, for us to draft that document and bring it back here for you all to vote on. I mean, your vote tonight is just telling me prepare documents.
Right. Typically, that'll, I mean, however you want to do it is fine, but what I've seen done is you can make a motion to approve Option Three subject to legal review, and in that way, we can work within the draft of proper-
See, today, we don't have an Option Two in the current contract. We only have, we can't separate them.
No, I'm saying, but they, quite frankly, a lot of times, I don't even have the contract drawn out before the agreement. We're just making a minor modification of this. So what I've seen boards do is you approve what you want subject to legal review. You have all, you have all three contracts.
Right.
So you have contract for A, contract for B, contract for- And all we're going to do is, so contractor C, it would just be-
I mean, we'll do whatever you want, but, but the way this board has always done it, the contract itself has to be approved and spread on a minute. They don't let me, they don't say, okay, do it, and let me go draw a contract and have somebody sign it.
Yeah, we're going to have another meeting in two weeks.
That's right.
So if we think that's appropriate in amount of time, then that will also give us the ability to check, to have these people review what we're proposing to do, and make sure that when we get to that Option Three, is that really the biggest bang for our buck? Because really, we're just taking that alone to secure those schools. It's, it really hasn't anything to do with efficiencies, it has to do with safety. So if we go back and review with them what we think are, are prime safety issues, and this right here will address it with this mechanism, and they recommend going forward, then I feel real comfortable with doing Options A, B, and C depending on the funding going forward.
So, and then, but I, I will, so your next meeting is the 25th?
Is it 24?
So, what you might want to do then is you might want to consider putting the financing on-
25th.
So 25th?
25th, no.
You might want to consider seeing if we can get the financing documents in place as well.
It's the 24th.
Okay.
And that would be Amber.
So we can do that.
24%.
So we can-
My bad, I didn't know.
And so what we'd have to do is basically see if Amber has a bandwidth to try to get that funding.
She mentioned going up to Jackson and meet with her DFA that's doing the bond issue, so we'd be happy to do that.
Here she comes. Jim will be coming down here, I've been, again, I've been working on some things, so he'll be coming down here. And, and, you know, that may be, we've done a lot of lease purchase agreements locally in the past with that kind of bank before, or somebody, it's wherever we get to. If, if that's the way we go with it.
I did shop at two banks, just to get you the best rate, the best indicative rate for the cash flow, and so we can, we can pair that with what you guys can write here, so. Because, I just want to get you started, it's probably two, three months before we're actually on the ground putting lights, all these things happening, and so there's a lot of downloads that have to fly.
Right.
Is it 24? Monday to 24.
That's fair. Amber will work on financing, Jim will work on the language, and we'll be back here on the 24. I hope we'll have a path forward. So with that being said, the only motion we need tonight is to authorize Jim to work with y'all on the order to, in the contract, and of course Amber, we can just tell her to go through the financing stuff, so we've got a motion there. So, is that good, Jim? Was that covered? Because that's, that's all we're voting on tonight.
I just to be candid, it's pretty optimistic to think that we can, can do anything really on financing until we're a little closer to the contract. I mean, you know, we could, could do some, some real general things, but we, we really haven't had a better idea what the project's going to be, to get much done with financing. Financing, that, you know, lease purchase arrangement, something like that won't take that hard to put together, but to think it could be ready in two weeks too, just not realistic. I want to put Amber on that contract.
So we'll shoot for what we can shoot for, we'll shoot for the contract in two weeks, and then we'll work on the financing. Because the financing's going to be tied back to what we decide to go for, but anyway, I still want to give these people the seat going down the right track. So we could de-scope some of that contract before we ever get to next Tuesday.
All right.
24. Monday.
It is Monday, the 24th.
Yes. All right, so, with that being said, then I have a motion to have Jim work with Pat to develop a contract that meets the stipulations that we discussed tonight. Any discussion?
I'm, I'm, I'm not for that, I think we need to discuss it, I think we have our policy, we have our thing, so I, I can't go with that. cost that we have, I think, um, so I, I just can't go with that.
Well, all right, so what I'd say, in, in between now and, and the twenty-fourth, I'm comfortable with the study they did, if you can find something that will change my mind, I'll be glad to listen. But right now, this is a motion for him just to work with them, and if we have to, it could be that we add other things into this contract, if you find something that we think we can add into it. But as of now, I'm comfortable with what we're putting in this contract, unless you come back in on the twenty-fourth and find something that we may need, that is above and beyond what they're putting in here. All right, so all in favor? All opposed? Motion passed. Flared emergency leave days, Hurricane Gordon. We'll talk to that.
Amber, you want to address, um, one of that, mouthful?
Perfect time. My bad. That's what you get for going off and eating while nobody else is eating.
We're not going to, y'all won't be hungry. Um, when we call emergency days, the employees don't work, so at some point, we've got to decide if we're going to pay them or not.
That's the decision we can make?
Based on your board policy, yes, um, for the days where we don't, uh, not pay them, pay them, or make them up. So, I've asked for the superintendent to approve us to go ahead and pay these employees for days that we declared emergency, that we did not allow them to work, except for the maintenance guys who did have to come in and get everything ready for that, what we thought was going to be a direct hit from a hurricane, and I've asked that they be given an administrative leave day, so that they don't have to take the mandatory leave day after Thanksgiving.
Board, you made the same motion on the previous two years.
Hurricane eight, this line.
But this has been the sister one.
So we're not going to have to have, as of now, we, we're not going to have to make up these days, is that right?
This is board, children, make them up.
No, but does the state have any, we're not obligated to make up these days?
That's right.
So, I don't have any problem.
I'll make that motion in one second.
All opposed? Motion passes. All right, can I get a motion to accept personnel recommendations in their entirety? Any, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Superintendent's updates, points, and interest.
I have several things, I'll be brief, I do want to acknowledge and recognize Kevin Byrd, he has a, a guest with him, Kevin has informed me that he is retiring after forty-something years.
Amen.
Kevin, congratulations on that, so, um.
Forty-four years.
Please introduce your guest to us.
This is going to be the new eighty-two liaison, Mona Odom, so you will see her throughout the district, school board meetings in some of your schools, so I think she'll do a wonderful job, she's from Texas, she's former high school counselor, so, and I, I want to thank y'all for, you know, helping me out, and allowing us to work with you.
Now, you, you did tell her about those buses and all, you wanted to go to the long drive. He totally got that to work.
What have I done?
It should be just about done. He has worked with us, and, and we appreciate all you do for us.
Mr. Byrd, you've been an asset to our, our district, we really do appreciate all that you've done, you've been instrumental in, you know, liaison for us, and truly, truly appreciate everything you've done for us.
Because it really runs smooth, we have, we have a real good relationship.
She'll do a good job.
I'm sure we will. You got some big shoes in your.
And we're looking forward to having you.
All right, Kevin, congratulations.
Yes, Kevin.
Congratulations. Jim, I think we're going to need a motion to approve or to set those dates for the special call meeting, we need to do that.
Uh, the special call meeting, you can do it now, or if the special call meeting happened by the president, he'd call, if we're off here, it's probably just more convenient to go ahead and set it.
We, we've established the date, so if we could just, if we do that.
I think he would.
Special, special call meetings are September twenty-fourth and October third, primarily for the purpose of interviewing candidates to be hired to be our architect for the new building.
So we need a motion for that?
You ready for that?
Yes.
All right, so, and that's not, that, that third, October third is not our normal.
That's correct.
Right, yeah, so both of those, well, we had to prove it officially, so, all right, so that's the motion, can I get a second on that? All in favor?
Okay, along those lines, Amber and I have been meeting with, um, firms regarding the new high school, I think at this point, we have met with six, I will not name those six, because they have not officially submitted bids, and when they do, we will, um, post that and inform you of who those companies are, but, um, again, we have met with six over the last several weeks, they have walked the high school campus, and they are, have all indicated that they will be submitting proposals to us, which are due on September twenty. And at that time, we will collect those and, and submit those to the board, and you will, um, again, you set two dates, on September twenty-fourth and October third, to interview those, um, those individuals of those companies, and we hope that on October the ninth, at the regular scheduled board meeting, that you will hi- hire an architect to, um, build on the high school. So that's kind of where we are, um, in that phase. I do want to, I'll make one more announcement tonight, we will have, um, an announcement tomorrow, that we have five semi-national finalists, um, at the high school this year, so that is outstanding news. Ty, you want to just acknowledge that, we cannot say their names tonight, or can we?
We can't, it's going to be public tomorrow.
Okay.
And we are delivering, Ms. Babbitt, Ms. Smithmellon, and Mr. Bennett and I are delivering signs, um, at their house tonight, late, late, in the wee hours, so that way, no one knows who they are until they wake up in the morning, it'll be a surprise, so we have those ready to go, um, so as soon as this meeting's over, we're going to be about eight-thirty and, and put those out, and tomorrow morning, they'll see that, and it'll be, I think, in the paper, and we'll have it on our sign. Very excited.
So if you get a call about a bus going through the neighborhood.
We're doing that.
Having five in one school is, is awesome, that, that's big time. So, and if you recall, I think with my agenda, you, um, voted to offer those ladies to teach that course at supplement, so that's that early morning class, I think four of the five attended that course or took that course, if I'm not mistaken.
You're right, and out of those students, um, three of them scored the perfect ACT score, also took that class, because they go, they split from the PSAT to the ACT, um,